And Mr. Coon, the first two items on the FOOPER committee agenda, we don't need to approve those. I had crossed that out and put review, but actually, the first item is just an FYI. And then the second one is in your packet to review the information about the compactor.
Sorry, it takes so long. We opened the meeting at 4:20, just for the record.
Yeah.
So what do you want to do with the first two? You have review in there now, so.
Yes, I did, but the first item is just FYI. The survey didn't change. They did a survey of the Department of Corrections property at 700 East Little. And they left me a phone message saying they wanted it to be approved by the city council. But there really are no changes, so I guess we can take it forward with no changes.
So you do want it to be approved by the council?
Doesn't need to be. I wasn't sure and wanted to make sure we had it on the timeline. It says that it needs to be approved during the set review set up. It was on, after confirming, it doesn't need to be approved.
Yeah.
So it just went from a possible approval, we needed it, we found it, now we didn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're going FYI on that, Mayor, so the survey says everything is as the mermaid's thought to be.
Yes, as it's always been, I guess.
And then the landfill compactor bid?
She dared explain what we got going on with that.
And so you've written in here, Frank, that the bid will appear in the Ranger Review on September 17th?
Frank, do you think, sorry, guys, do you think that opening the bids on that Tuesday, that, I mean, all the time I've been sitting here and they've had sealed bids, rarely did we act on it that night, if that's the point I'm getting at. So are you going to bring that to the council on the 7th? Was that your plan, or to bring it later?
Um, obviously later.
Yeah, yeah, okay, because they're always like, oh, we gotta take this under by.
So, I mean, according to our own, it has to go to paper.
Okay.
So I, that gives me time to put everything together, then present it to the city, which would be the next week. And then from that, that second meeting, October 11th.
Okay.
That was the schedule ahead later.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Coon.
So you're going out for new, and then are you?
No, no, not for what we get. I'm assuming right now the BOMAG is actually down, these repairs, that's going to be very soon. No, honestly, I think that we need to hit it with their history on the back end and give it back. Ultimately, that is the, that doesn't have to be an emergency situation, doesn't have to be something that you have to do without planning ahead, right? And so if we get a new machine, I've done a lot of research on these machines, I've looked around, talked to a lot of people. I'm not necessarily looking for a new one. I got it in here for a used one, too. If I get a full rebuilt cat, I'm pretty comfortable with that. I mean, ultimately, that's going to be your decision, but I'm completely fine with that. Just knowing my background in the end, caterpillar and equipment. I'm sure Jason would be tested this, too. They're good at what they do. You know, the caterpillar, that's the direction we go, is that I could have a mechanic here the same day or the next morning. There's numerous caterpillars.
One that was in the move, yeah.
Right now, we have a Mercedes. Probably it was down for what, eight months? Well, so, we did a good job. I feel we've done a really good job, and the guys have done a really good job of getting this piece of equipment to last as long as it may. And on, and a hydraulic failure, present trap and all through, entire hydraulic system on it. It's got four motors and each wheel is driven independently by a motor, a trap and all through every one of them. So we literally have to go to billings if this. Fortunately, we have a backup machine up there. We've got that, we've had to do a little maintenance and a little thing to buy it. Some things, but that's what we've been doing to get us out of the crisis situation. We do have something to run right now. So we're able to go through the process here, the state regulations on the bid process and go about this without some kind of emergency or anything. We are still operating perfectly fine. But, you know, we do, it's an important piece of equipment. I don't think it's worth getting rid of the old one.
Still a couple of questions, Frank. The one that had the, I don't know if you said trap and all through the four engines, then that one is going to be a backup after we get the new one?
My point would be is eventually, yes.
Somebody will have to repair all that.
Yes, that will have to.
Okay, and that'll be.
That will come out across.
Yeah.
We can, we can plan ahead and.
Right, okay.
Adjust accordingly.
Because the one we have now will go back to somebody that we're borrowing from. Yeah, okay, the second thing, does council need to approve the bid here? I mean, it's not really the bid, it's the, it's what the specs are for the bid.
This is an FYI.
Okay.
It is in the book.
This is, it's also important to help the landfills and depressed fund. Purchases and operating costs and fees collected at the land. So no tax, no taxation within years, basically purchase from them. It's why I'm picking five, it's why I'm picking five, operating someone. So it's a necessary piece of equipment. If you notice in there, I'm definitely leaning in the direction of a, I'm not requiring a tier four. I don't have to, I don't need a tier four, I just assume I have a simple C-18 cat motor. Not to put that in. That'll cut down operations.
Well, not to prolong things, but there was a time when we did actually vote to go forward with the bid, but somebody sitting somewhere said that we did at that time, and that's okay. Nobody else has anything they want to bring up at this, and we're going to move forward? Okay, the next item is the multi-purpose building. Mayor, why don't you start out where you want to put the focus on what we need to talk about here?
Okay, well, again, you guys are getting some information here that maybe we'll go to a different committee, but because we want, do want to move forward with a plan. So I did talk to Mary Jo Gaynor, the ambulance director, and she does have some ideas, but she couldn't be here at the meeting today, and I won't, I'm not sure, but. So I don't feel that we really have to make a decision right now. Everything is locked, locked up over there. John and I did go and get the files that justice court needed right away. We also, I went over there with Stacy and got the things that she needed. So, right now, immediately, justice court is able to pick up the cases, so there are some ideas that have come forward. One was to move the city council meetings over there. Of course, that room is also used for a lot of ambulance training, but I just thought we should start to look at options, and I, like I said, we don't have to make a decision today, and this isn't anything we have to take to the council on Tuesday. So I just want everybody to start thinking practicality and what we might want to do with that.
Well, I just, since you brought it up, Mayor, I think you did, it's right there, number three of the. I know other people, it's called multi-purpose for a reason, but if the city council is going to meet there, then it should be also organized in such a way that it facilitates those meetings. In other words, we shouldn't be putting tables up and pulling chairs out. If, you know, if you want to have a special meeting, fine, I get it, but if you're going to be meeting there twice, then, you know, you're going to have like an office type thing where people can get information and that type of stuff. And there could be other things that go on in there besides that. I'm not precluding those things, I'm just saying that if that's where the council is going to be doing its business, then it should be organized in such a way. And that may even include possibly carpet just for the noise level and those things. So those are, there's some considerations. Those things may not be worth a boot right now that I said, but I'm just saying, I wouldn't want it to be, okay, we're going to move everything over there for, and then we got to get our crap out of there before tomorrow, and then we got to move it back, and then we're going to get our stuff out of the way. And, you know, it's like, it's going to be a temporary kind of deal back and forth to stay here. But, that was my two cents. I don't know if anybody else, since it is on the agenda there, but. Everybody else, yeah, Mr. Coon, you got your thinking cap there?
No, I was putting my goggles on.
Okay. All right, Mayor, then we're going to go FYI there. And I'm sure you'll meet with Mary Jo, and you guys will get back to us when you think we need to go further.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is dividing duties this committee to make the workload more balanced. Well, that's an interesting thing. What do you, you guys got the thing? There's not, there's not a thing on this committee that normally, that I'm like, oh, gosh, I wish we didn't do that, somebody else should do it. Although alcohol things were always violations or variations. We're always with the other committee and stuff like that. Some of those end up over here, which is, I'm just saying that the
For time.
The line is not as clear. Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
A lot of things FOOPER does, you kind of need some of the other facets of FOOPER. It's hard to break it up. I mean, like you said, like the, sometimes I have to squeeze something in that doesn't normally, would normally do with ordinance or whatever. The jobs that people go, I don't know what John feels like, if there's an army, we could support some vast stuff here.
Well, in my mind, finance is probably enough of, there's always something on there, working on the budget or purchases that could keep the committee as busy as the others are. As long as you have, I guess, someone, you know, I can see a finance committee, I could see a public works committee that would take care of parks and rec and swimming pool and all those types of things. And as long as you have people at those meetings who can speak to, as I said, Jason, you know, it's nice to get the input, maybe the public works when we're talking about something like that.
Yeah.
It's just when I look at the FOOPER title, finance utilities, property recreation, I think is what it is. It just seems like a mishmash of topics for you. I don't know that I have a specific plan, but.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Coon.
Well, and then when it got brought up, I don't know, last week or something, the only thing that I think works well, and I don't know, I mean, being on here 15, 16 years, and you've been on longer, but we deal with projects and money. Another committee was doing stuff with money and working stuff with money. I don't know what necessarily the detail that the other ones doing. So if they were, there was another one that was the pool committee, cool running, but we're the finance committee. Now, I think that's where it disconnected, where it's always worked out really great. I mean, because we've done, the FOOPER committee did that building, the waste water treatment plant, the water treatment plant, and then the piles and water sewers and over there, and all that other stuff, and I all want to hear that with budgets, but that's not a product result. Since we are caught at the speed on all of it, we're able to keep that in mind. And then when it comes to budget time, kind of the same thing, we're in tune with all those and compactors and stuff like that, so I can absorb the cool.
More interest, recreation.
So I'm just doing, I just do here is cross the R.
You are all comfortable how things are, if you see the synergies that we're.
One thing I'd like to throw in on that is the, I agree with the finances, whether it's budget or expenditures and projects and stuff, even utility somewhat in terms of infrastructure and that, but the street committee, I don't mean to pick on street committee, street committee could be, and then this could be broken into two separate parts here, and then street could go, those issues, like what we talked about today, could go to the other committee. I mean, we're trying to balance things out. We're not trying to say this is important and this isn't and that. But also another consideration is, like if Frank has, you know, we want him here to talk. A lot of our budget issues are public works and our expenditures and stuff. But then if he has to go to the other committee, which isn't the end of the world, but at the same time, I would bet sometimes he's not at the committee meetings and, you know, taking up his time like that. So I mean, what I want, trying to say is I would like the department head to look at it, see if, like if he has to be here for this and for that, then maybe that should be the same committee meeting, so you can get it done at that point. Ordinance, I wouldn't imagine you do a lot there. The other thing we're replacing, I know it's.
Oh, okay.
I know you didn't mean to say issues, you meant.
Okay, yes, and then the personnel, I mean, I know we don't want to, but we do need to tweak that or move it to where we do have a legitimate concern with our workforce as the city council. And so even though we don't want to get in so-called HR issues, we still can look at things that affect the workplace that the council needs to have a say to. Yeah, and so, and policy. So anyway, that was kind of a long take of your time there, but I think you guys can go back and talk about it, too. I don't know if you guys get together with the others and.
Well, no, we don't, but I would just bring up that the personnel committee is basically used for outside of the times that it meets, because we, our policy says that we have to have members of the personnel committee on every interview. So whenever we schedule an interview, then those people that are on the personnel committee, they have to come to city hall for another time for, you know, interviews. So the personnel committee, I think, still has a purpose for that and for some other things, but another thing that, you know, I had in my previous job was a public safety committee, and that might be, you know, something that could be personnel slash public safety, where we're talking about the police and ambulance, because the police and the ambulance aren't really on FOOPER, but they usually come, because I don't know where else we would send them. So normally, when we have an ordinance and personnel meeting, their personnel, all I can basically tell people is, you know, we hired someone or someone left employment. I really can't disclose any personnel issues in a public meeting. And the reason that the MMIA is recommending that we, and that other people who have these committees don't necessarily call them that, is because sometimes it might be easy for somebody to ask a question and somebody answer it that really is disclosing information that shouldn't be made public. So I do see the need for some type of a way to balance the load. So I'm not necessarily saying we should break up the FOOPER committee, but that we should maybe reconstruct a committee with personnel where we can personnel street or personnel, personnel police and ambulance or whatever, or fire. What about fire? Yeah, so public safety seem to make sense.
You still need your policy and ordinance committee.
Right, yes, we do. I do feel that we do need the ordinance committee. You know, they're supposed to be handling nuisances, and there are, sometimes the ordinance committee can get kind of long, too. But this group, I mean, this meeting is the one that is traditionally unless, since I've been here, always the one that has the most items on the agenda and takes the longest time. So I'm just trying to make it. I'm just, I thought it might be an idea.
Yeah, it's light years' order compared to.
I'm just, you're just like teasing, like, because he talks.
I was thinking that. The, you know, Mayor, I'd like to throw this in, too, though, the legal issues, like we get land use issues, COS, somebody wants to help me out there, change, okay, yeah, and things like that. They come to FOOPER, but where do they fit in, utility? But I mean, they could be with another committee. I'm looking at actual things that we deal with, that if we didn't have.
Put it in the B in the property.
Yeah. The, the police and that. Sure, there's some people that might show up now. The one thing with the police and that, and I'm not saying hang on to it here or anything, but so many things come back to budget, like even safety issues. But I guess the way I'd see it, they could work on the safety issue, and if you felt that's the way it goes, then our committee would look at the cost of it. We've done that before on things. It is a little more cumbersome, because you have to have meeting, and then two weeks later, another meeting before it even goes to the council. But those are usually kind of fairly important things, too, and it's mostly all about where we aren't in an emergency, being run over by events, which you can't always control that. So, you know, I mean, if you have time to deal with it, there's nothing wrong with it going to both committees, as long as they understand that.
I just want to, like, just a little clarification. No way is, we're not pushing any personnel things to FOOPER. We just brought it here to discuss how we made.
Right, exactly.
Our department heads and John are kind of doing the HR, and they're just going to restructure.
Right, right.
And I think, like what Mike brought up, like, street closures and all that other stuff, doesn't have to, we could really just de-mail off finance and projects, that kind of stuff, but.
And we could have street slash ordinance. I mean, there, I'm just saying there might be some better ways to organize it, so it's more balanced. But, I mean, no one has complained to me that they're overworked, so.
Yeah, they would love to deal with all the ordinance and alcohol waivers. Close the streets and serve alcohol. Quoted, the Ranger quoted Mike Dragon.
Anyway, it's just for discussion.
Get the booze out of there. We'll get this pound back on its feet, or maybe that we off their feet. Are we still live here, Mayor?
Yes, yes, we are. And it's all on you, Mike, the can.
Okay, so that's an FYI, or yes, needs more discussion. I heard Mr. Seans say something about he heard a can being kicked down the street on that one, so we'll move on here.
Right.
All right, number five, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, here's one that's interesting, because I'm like, I'm not even sure our committee has nuisance in its, I, I'll talk about, we'll deal with it here, but I'm just saying nuisance would seem like an ordinance thing, but I guess it's the timeframe. Yeah, that's what it is.
Exactly, because it's, there's not time to bring it to a committee
Right.
before the next council meeting. So I brought it here, and I just said that we'll bring the request to the full council. I'm just because we have that resolution that we can't take anything to council till it's come to a committee, and so he has another inju, he has a new injury.
Madam Mayor, let me just throw this in here, though. I've thought a little bit about this, since council members were chewing on me without mentioning my name, and that's fine. Mr. Whitso here, he wants more time, okay, and so on and so forth, and that's not really my point here. My point is, a lot of times with the committee, if we don't push something forward, it doesn't go to the council. And this seems like it's going to the council, whether we want it to or not, and so that's just why I bring it up first. Because if it has a chance where if we say, no, we don't want to take it forward, meaning this committee, it doesn't stop, it's still going to the council, is what you're saying. I just wanted to make that clear, otherwise, we might just say, well, we don't even want to talk about it, we're done with it. That means no, and we move on, but that's not the pus. It's going to go to the council, whether we want it to or not. Is that what you're saying, Mayor?
Well, I didn't feel that this was the appropriate place to bring it.
Okay.
You're right, it should go to ordinance, but ordinance does not meet until the 22nd. And by the time ordinance meets, and then the next council meeting would be on the 7th, it would be past the time when his time is up.
But let me just, let me go back to the question that I was actually raising, so forget the timeline, just give me what you think the answer would be on this. If ordinance said no, and so we don't make a motion to take it to the council, could they then kill it in committee? That's basically all I'm asking. In other words, you're telling me we cannot stop this, it's going to the council, whether we want it to or not, regardless of whatever our name is as a committee. So that's just, that's just what I want to know. So we, so it's going to the council, whether we all disagree with this request or not, correct?
Well, my thought was that it should go to the council for everyone to have an input, because, of course, we're not a quorum. And, but as a committee, certainly, if you, if this committee would want to wait on this issue, we can take it to ordinance on the 22nd, and if they determine no, then he has one week to clean up his property.
That was not requested. That's not where I'm going with this. You guys understand?
I understand what you're saying, that.
I'm just saying, if we don't want to do it, then it's done, dead. Because, because otherwise, what's the purpose of a committee if they can't refuse to do something? If everything's going to be a yes, then why?
Don't recommend that we.
Right, right.
Is.
Yeah, we can do that. But, but here's the thing, the parliamentary procedure. But there's this guy named Rat Coon, and then other guys that followed along with him over all his 16 years, and they'd always say, you don't make a negative motion. In other words, you don't recommend something in a negative way. But I get it, we can do that. That's what we'll do. I understand, I don't want to, I don't want this.
Do it just because I said it, I'm just.
No, 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 I don't want to go into the other committee, though. I'm not trying to delay this. My point was, if we say no now, it doesn't happen, but that's not the case, and I'm just going to let it go with that. So you guys go ahead and say what you think we should do with this. I didn't want, I would like, I think I've heard, read the tea leaves, and you guys were.
I feel you should. Or that's. So, and then you say no, he gets a week to clean it up, or not, we go over there.
I was planning on doing the original date right now.
The second, so you're giving him by us saying no.
It won't be a problem.
Well, I, I think the two choices I think we have, I mean, we kill it here. Quest doesn't go to the council, so as is his extension denied. Or we give the council the benefit of having votes on it on Tuesday, where it's possible. Well, I think that Mike was saying that we have the power to kill it, but if so, all four of us say no, we want it. We deny the extension then. But I think, otherwise, the other committee, like saying, then it's passed the deadline, it's redid and that, so. I mean, we just have to, we need to kill it here or go to the council.
I think our council, in our council meeting, we were pretty clear that he was not going to get another extension, no matter what the circumstances was, and that public works would be there on the second, or whatever date you said, to clean it up if it's not done. And I think that's what we stick with.
Well, yeah, I have no problem with that. Mayor, is part of this, here's the due process. Here's the due process thing. I, I agree. Joanna, I'm not opposing any of what you guys are saying, but uh, if we did it on September sixteenth, then. Mr. Whitso would be here to make his case. Is that the, is that the? Kind of what we suspect might happen? Is that the? Is that the information that he thinks he's operating under that? Because I'm okay if you guys, you know, let everybody have their say. They can all vote. Uh, feel good about what they do and. I'm just saying as a practical matter, like if we don't want. A tax increase, this committee says we're not going forward with it, or some other idea, doesn't matter, but.
And I'll be more cognizant of that because I do, I am the person who wrote the agenda, of course, and I said, we'll bring request to full council. Simply because I thought that that. Would probably be what we would do since we're not really the committee to hear this. Now, Mr. Whitso did call me and he said. He would appear uh, before the council, and I told him at this point I didn't feel that that was necessary. We've already heard his. Proposal before, and he told us it would be done on October first. And he had a leg injury at that point, and now he has a different injury. Which is making it difficult for him to walk, so.
And that's unfortunate.
It is, but I.
Wish that, but I would just say this. He, you don't need to communicate with him, or you can. It's, it's up to you, Mayor. But I would say he does have the right to be there, and if he wants to be there, he should be there.
No, let's go. Uh. House speaking question, so we, we put in our uh. Fines and fees and that.
Mm-hmm.
But. But if the Public Works, we've gone and cleaned that up. That gets put on these tax, that's good success on.
They'll get a bill, bill's not leaving success. Success, it doesn't matter. So then on that assessment, how many years that's. Two hundred thirty's. Property taxes and job. Whatever top to go and put in about that. And if it doesn't pay.
Plus the fees. It's how much it costs to clean it up, plus the fees.
The landfill fees.
Oh, right, there, because there's a fine that we implemented too.
That in effect on this?
No, the fines on the weeds.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's on weeds, yeah. I'm getting.
Yeah.
But this was why.
You know. They have to be charged for that because it's keeping our employees and our equipment from doing city work.
So, the charge. Since I started, say, our any stable price was thirty percent.
So here was, here was what I was asking with, just to go a little further with this, uh, with John, with our budget is to say. We have a line item that says. This is how we're going to pay for that if. The property isn't clean to what the city thinks it should be by October first. And the council doesn't give an extension. Then, you know, we got to pay for that. Like overtime and those kind of things and the fees that go through garbage. I mean, one thing that's been a hallmark ever since I've been around the city is when somebody goes across the scale, it always costs. We don't know who's going to pay it, but there's no freebies. The landfill, and when you get into, if you start doing freebies, I'm going to tell you, we got. And my knowledge, the city has not gone down the road, and I would be very much against going down.
I don't, we don't say we're doing something with the.
Right, so the point is, though, that. Probably won't get paid till the next tax year, and I don't mean to be a, a bad guy, but if then. But we're not going to get the money and for another year at least, and so therefore that's why I wanted money in the budget to pay the cost of those things. Or if we have even bigger projects that we need to clean up, because. We can't depend on people always to take care of their own responsibilities. It to be such a. Can't even say it. Bad guy. But anyway, that, that's what I was talking earlier when we were doing the budget, it was saying we need money to pay for things now because we're not going to get. We'll leave it there. But, okay, so um, we're going to go ahead with Mr. Whitso. He's going to come, oh, what do you, you guys okay with that, or what do you want to do?
I'm fine with it going to a vote. We just suggest another roll of all votes within the council. You know how. I'm not, uh, I'm not single amount. I, I feel like we have to represent his neighbors just as much as we ought to representation. There's a big list of neighbors that have an issue with that mess.
And I think we already gave him his second and third chance to get it cleaned up on time, and. He still has till October first, and he had. Plan of calling and asking for volunteers, and he hasn't done that, so his injury shouldn't be. An issue if he was going to follow through with the plan that he gave the council. When we gave him the extension, and I think the council was very, very clear on what the plan was moving forward and that there would not. Be any more chances, and I don't. We have to start following through with exactly what we say.
Well, I mean, I, I, I feel for the guy, but.
Mm-hmm, hundred percent.
Was crystal clear, and I mean, I would be in favor of quashing the heater.
I would be too. I was one of the ones that voted for his extension and said, no, give him another chance, so. And, but I was also very, I think we all were very, very, very clear that this is it. There's too many issues that are impacting others people around him. To let it keep going.
Well, I would um. It just in a second here, request of what you guys want. To do moving forward because. I'm okay either way, whether we. Take it there or not, because I agree with what was said here on the. You know, here was the timeframe, and secondly, let me add this, and. This, Mr. Whitso got this information, fine. If he doesn't, that's fine. But I didn't necessarily see him physically getting the work done. I don't know if it was Joan or somebody just mentioned that getting. His job, in my view, was to get something organized, and I know that's not easy. I, I wouldn't want to be that person. I mean, I don't know that I would get it done either, but. Uh, but that was, we didn't, I didn't see him physically getting it done, so. Maybe even with injuries, you can still get the organization part done, because it's going to be the other people to get it done. And they're either going to show up to help out, uh, either way. I mean, um. Like, I mean, Red said, I, I. We can't accommodate for everybody's position in life, and his situation, maybe from a health standpoint, isn't the greatest, and we feel bad for that. But we weren't counting, I wasn't, when I voted to give him that. Extra uh, month there because physically I saw him out there picking everything up, throwing in the dumpster. I didn't see that, so I don't see it now either. But he can still call the people and get the help done. So now, what do you guys want to do? I'm, I, I, I know where you were earlier, and so you made your point and uh. Um. Yeah, I'm not going to vote for an extension if that's what you guys want to know, but. If you want the other four people to pound. Pound their chest about this thing or whatever they want to do on it, that's fine, um. What do you want to do?
I think it should go to the council. I think the council already made its decisions.
Mayor, what do you think? Uh, I, I'm okay with what I just heard, and I, and I, and before I write it down on my little note pad, I. I, I don't want to put you, you kind of in the. In the bad position here, so.
No, I'm just a messenger here, Mike, so it's, I'm, I'm okay, because remember, I. I sent the letter, and he said he didn't get the letter. Uh, he got the letter from the sanitarian like a month later, and the sanitarian already gave him his first extension. And then we gave him an extension. And so this would be the third extension.
So, just so we're clear then, in my report, from what has been said, it's not going to the council. It's. It'd be part of the report, but there's no request to the council on the agenda.
You can't getting another. Because the council already decided.
The council has decided, and then that's it, yeah. But I do appreciate you bringing that forward, Mayor, uh, because, and not. Making the decision one way or another on that, so. Okay, I'm going to go to number six then, guys. Discuss implement and implement. Plan to have audio recording, the meeting available on city website within two weeks. Following the meeting needs to be implemented in October twenty twenty five. That's a, you. The way I understood that, Mayor, from you said earlier, that's a state law now from the legislature. And so I'm. If you guys have things we need to consider and all that, but I don't see that we can evade this. It's something we need to do, so. Um, go ahead if you guys have some comments on this, or. Mayor, if you want to say anything about beyond what you already did, um.
Well, I guess what, the only thing that I'm saying is. So I think it's by the middle of October. John has the dates on it, but. What they're saying is if we have a website that we have to have our audio. Recordings of the meetings on our website within two weeks following the meeting. So we have struggled with this YouTube thing. Um, I know people think that we're. Doing something nefarious, but if you're at these meetings, you see that sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. It seems to be working now. Um. But all we are required to do, because we're a third-class city, is provide a audio recording, so I feel that if. The state is requiring us to put it on the website. We're contacting the website company so that they can. Um. Help us to make sure we can put such a big file on there because it doesn't say to provide a link. So, someone can go to our website. And hear the audio of the meeting, and maybe that's. All that we really need to do because it's all we're required to do. We are trying to do the video, but I've been mayor for almost two years, and I'd say. We're lucky if this works fifty percent of the time, and sometimes it stops in the middle of the meeting, and I have no idea why. So, I think that that angers people because they feel like. We're doing it on purpose or something, so. If they could listen to the audio recording whenever they want on our website. I think one thing we would need to be more careful about, which I haven't always been good about it, is. That we know who's speaking so that, you know, if you call on someone, you're saying their name, so when they're talking. People know who's speaking because they can't see the video. Um. The other thing that um. I discovered in looking into this is that any meeting that the city has where there is not a quorum. So, of course, this meeting, there's not a quorum. The only thing we decide on is, does it go to the council for a vote? We're not really. Um. Able to make decisions, so. Those meetings do not need to be recorded. We started recording them. Um. I think it was around the time of the rec department closing, and. People were saying, why, we need to know what happens at those meetings, and so I said, okay, we're just going to record all meetings. Well. Only half of them work, and then, you know, we get a lot of grief over that. It's not intentional, but um. We could do a audio of those meetings as well. And of course, of every meeting that we do, we also have always done a audio recording of it. So even when the video doesn't work, we do have a audio, but we weren't required to. Um, produce it, so that's all I'm saying is um. I don't feel like I should be the one that makes those decisions. I feel like it probably should be a full. Council decision if we're just going to go with the audio that we're required, but I just. You know, again, bringing it here.
So Mayor, let me just, before we go here, the. Clarification is that the legislature requires the council meeting. Audio for a city our size to be recorded, not committee meetings necessarily.
Right.
So, again, if we do committee, then you, again, you got to. Do them all that are public. On the other hand, if you don't do the committee meeting, it is a public meeting.
Sure, sure.
So people have, people can be here and such. I know they can't be here. Uh, in all those, there's a lot of conflicts and all that, but again, like you said, committee meeting is just where there's discussion. Uh, the decisions. Are made at the council meeting for the most part. Um, and then. What was the other part there? Oh, yes, at the council meeting, uh, Mayor. Mr. Coon, would you like to speak? So the mayor calls on Mr. Coon, and it would say, so therefore people would need you to. Recognize them. You, you might have already said that, and, but I was just kind of. Throwing that out that that's kind of how that would have to happen, and that way. Mike Dragon doesn't say, well, this is Mike Dragon speaking, and everybody's like, geez, turn it down. But anyway, um, okay, I went on long enough. Don't tell us the obvious.
Somebody else have anything for me?
Yeah.
No, it sounds good.
That's soccer practice.
Thank you.
Soccer coach, are you repping soccer tonight?
So we're just going to move. What being proposed is moving this to a council vote. To do what's required by the legislature, an audio recording posted within two weeks of the meeting on our website.
I would uh. Say let's do what the law says, you know, as opposed to adding more to it.
Yeah, I mean, this.
Because I'm going to get conflict like you already pointed out. Okay, so the council will look at that. Discuss the end of Windows ten, if we want to pay for one more year, which our computers will need to be upgraded. I assume John is going to be the guy that's going to really come in on this here.
Well, so. Well.
Yo, you go ahead, John.
There's two issues. One is. There are some. Software options that we're looking at that only. Uh, I think what we have now. Is fine with Windows ten, but there are some other pictures. The other issue is that the mayor and Red and I have been. Communicating with a couple of IT support companies. And I think both of them. Basically say you need to have your supporting machines upgraded to Windows eleven. Now, um. That's something that isn't hard to do. It's just that sometimes when you upgrade, it has downstream effects that. You don't always know about before, on some of these older, so, but maybe something like Blackwell. Um. But I think that is, so the issue is. Do we want to take some time and? And um. Think about this a little bit more completely, how we want to do this upgrade in a more organized fashion. And just buy the extra support for Windows ten. Uh, for another year, which according to one of these copies was very, very cheap. It's, it's next to nothing. And probably the right thing to do right now. Uh. For those, if we get a software that requires Windows eleven. We're just going to have to have a machine with Windows eleven on it. We're going to have to migrate there anyway. So.
Yeah, I was thinking, uh, do exactly that, and then whichever company we end up on and. Can help us do that. And you can vote for it.
There's still ways that, I want to throw in on that, the uh. IT as far as. Asking them for specific, you know, bidding and stuff and making a decision on the um. IT company that we're going to uh.
Well, we've been quite a bit of progress, actually. I think. By next Fuper meeting, we'll have a recommendation. For you.
And this will all fit in with, with that. It doesn't need to. Be held back what we're talking here with Windows ten and programs for Windows eleven versus whatever IT group we get. I mean, we don't have to do one before the other. You're saying go ahead. Whatever IT uh, group we hire will be fine with. This progress either that we're talking about.
Yeah, I think so. Brett said they could help us manage the transition. Uh, and we don't have to scramble right now. To do something on our own, and we know the consequences of that, like, so. They can look at our software suite, they can. You know, we can have a more informed approach about what moving to Windows elevens. If anything was going to do to some of our programs, and they'll have that answer, so.
And we planned adequate budget for this. And we planned adequate budget for this.
We did put a placeholder in the budget for the support, um, and uh. And like I said, find the, the extra year where the support will be.
So Mayor, do we need to, the council need to do anything, or is this nor just administrative? Is this a council decision?
Well.
I mean, I appreciate me bringing this forward here to the count, the committee, for us to. Uh, be informed about it, but I don't know, the council doesn't need to actually vote to do anything.
That's just another discussion issue.
Okay.
All right.
All right, the new agreement with Dawson Justice Court, I assume this is in light of our. City court officials.
Uh, yes, yes it is, so we had planned to um, do that on. January one, so you're, the agreement's in your packet. Um, we changed the date that we entered into the agreement on to the ninth day of September. And. Then the only. There were a couple of other small changes on the second page, um. We agreed to pay the prorated cost for items uh, one through three, which is. Um, to. Pay for half the cost of mandatory judicial and staff training, lodging, miles and meals. Um, cost of one set of. Montana code annotated, costs of miscellaneous office equipment up to twenty-five hundred dollars, and. Then the cost of the thirty thousand dollar cost for the wages of the. Um, clerk and the ju- justice of the peace, so that's number three. So on the last page, it um, calculates uh, what we agree to pay them. Ten thousand dollars for wages until the end of this year. Um, to pay half the cost of this month's judicial training, lodging and mileage. Um, this is not a year that we get the MCA codes, at least that's what I was told. And then the cost of office equipment, so for one year, it would be twenty, I think twenty-five hundred dollars. And so for a fourth of the year, it would be eight twenty-five, so. The agreement is signed by all the commissioners, by the JP, and. Uh, by myself, but anytime we, we have an agreement like this, we. Um, we need to take it to the council, so it's coming here, so like from all of the council.
Mayor, on that, um, last page where it talks about the end of the year, that's calendar year, correct?
Well, it's, um, Shirley had contacted me and said. Could we make this be on September thirtieth of each year, because as you know. Our budgets aren't finalized until September, and so it was supposed to be. At the beginning of a fiscal year, but we had already changed that, so. That she will know the cost so that she can bill us accurately. Um, and she said she wouldn't really know that until the budget was done, so.
We're gonna go September thirtieth through September thirtieth.
Okay, yeah.
You guys have any questions or comments? So, Mayor, anything else on that? We're gonna, looks like we're gonna take that forward and have the council uh. Go ahead with that, good job, uh, that was pretty quick, uh, getting that going ahead. Thank you for that, so that'll be council. Did you have anything else you were gonna add on here, Mayor, before public comment, or are we ready for public comment?
I think we're ready for public comment.
Any public comment? Okay, alright. Alright, well, uh, thanks guys for good work, and. I'm gonna see what that said, uh, five fourteen, we are adjourned. Uh, I'll try to have this done. Tomorrow sometime.
It's fine, I, yeah, I already have the agenda done for the.
Okay.
The council, so.
That might help if I look at the agenda to see, uh, cause I don't want to have agenda.
Maybe, but I don't know.